Can I, I'd like to, it's five thirty.
Yes.
We have all five council members here. I would like to call the joint meeting to order with the council and if the council would like to come and sit up with us and join us.
And on this topic, you think?
And on this topic and join in.
Yeah.
Because it is sustainability and we'll welcome everybody and we'll call the meeting, the joint meeting to order and all five of us are here just for the record.
Will you run it? Do you take over?
Uh, no, I'm gonna let you.
Okay, you let me know if you want to, yeah, okay.
We'll, you know.
I will see, I will hand the baton.
So we have Kerry, Kerry Weest, Vice Mayor Lempers, Councilwoman Laura Redmer and of course Greg. Okay, okay, now do you-
What I wanna do is call everybody because this is a topic that's very personal for people, it's very visceral. Everybody has their own idea and this group really hasn't done this yet, so.
Can I make one quick suggestion?
Yeah.
So what I could do is develop planting plans based on the idea around the key activity areas that we have a little bit more green, a little bit more textured, a little bit more nuanced landscaping and then we retain our kind of more focused on very low water use site adapted species in areas that are away from the main kind of events spaces. Does that sound like a reasonable approach?
I think, yeah.
Great, does that address your, okay.
You know what, I just want to be real quick on that note is that it's always been part of our design approach that part of the site plan and the planning of the Pacific Center, it's been about education on touching on it, that there might be a few areas where we do look at, you know, the latest in bioswale. So if someone is coming, I think that was an intent from the very beginning, if someone's coming to, you know, public works to show off their garden design and there's some questions about the latest bioswale or stormwater, you know, or permeable paving, all these things, hey, let's walk right downstairs, let's walk out of the courtyard and here's what a bioswale can be. Here's the plant species around the bioswale and here's what permeable paving might look like. So there, I'd just like to hope that that's still a part or that the community supports that a part of the design.
It's a good reminder for us to not lose focus on that.
So Chris gave us a metric or a proxy for how he's gonna redo. Does anybody feel differently? Did you wanna comment on that before he comes back?
Can we pull the council members or apply the need first?
I don't want it to look like Portola Valley.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
That's very green.
That's full native, yeah. That's full Californian native, yeah, that, yeah.
It's brown, yes, it's, it's gray.
I wanna think about the lawns etc. in my house and it's all drought tolerant, but it's certainly not Californian native. That's a nice variety of things and people actually prefer it to the more conventional English landscaping.
Oh, I'm not gonna do foxwoods and ducklings, right?
There's some beautiful trees, there's beautiful things you can use for your, I think something like fun, right? Well, I walked in right in the middle of this.
Okay, well, you can, you can take, you can take, we'll come back if you guys, we'll come back.
We're doing, we're doing landscape. Don't you think here though, we've got that there?
Yeah, I, I think that even during the summertime you need to have some color, so I'd like to see a mixture as well and I think that, as we said, in places where people are traveling through, it should be, there should be some color and the far off places, sure, you know, and, and the color, if we could, as we said, it should be as much drought tolerant as we can, but.
Okay. Kerry?
I like drought tolerant, but I think that because of the area, maybe an educational component attached to it, so that maybe sections of different varieties drought, but identified by states and using some things as an educational component, if you go into the library, so we ever have to change something, we can change the setting and not have to have a huge budget item for it and a whole segment doesn't look bad, we're maybe only a part of a segment would look bad.
Perfect. Great, thank you. And Gary, did you have a?
I agree with all the comments.
Christine?
Yeah, and the other part I wasn't sure, did we agree, I had to step out for a sec, did we agree that we could use mixtures of Mediterranean and from around the world?
That's what you said, yeah, it's not, it's not Californian native, it's, yeah.
Oh, great, so yes, I agree.
And I agree, well, the only thing I would add for your next go around is on the margin, on the margin, we can upgrade outside this building. So this terrace, I'm going away from planting because I think we're gonna move off of landscaping, this terrace should be a wonderful place to hang out and we should really think about materials. It should, there's gonna be a place to get a coffee here, like, it should feel like a place you're, you're gonna go to instead of Starbucks because it's nice, it's Atherton, you just wanna hang out. So you should really think about materials there and, and we should avoid materials that feel like a commercial building like the permeable concrete pavers. It's gonna feel very commercial. So I would try very hard not to feel like that.
So on that note, just for material, just before I go away.
Shall we go to library entrance?
These are the two main materials that we're thinking of from a landscape perspective. This is the porous concrete, it's to be poured as a uniply, a uniform surface. It's exposed aggregate porous concrete, which is actually awesome. It's a very new thing they can do in the last five years or so. And so it looks more like DG, but it's pergius. And then this is the wood type because they're doing teak for the mullions in the library, picking up on Garapa, which is kind of like Epe or Jotoba. It is a neotropical hardwood, you can get an FSC certified, so it's sustainably forested, but it's a blonder wood.
So where are you putting those, on the deck?
This would be the deck. This would be the dominant paving type throughout the whole space.
My fear on the Epe lake wood is maintenance and so we might wanna look at synthetics like ceramic or something, just like we're doing in the lobby.
They're not slippery.
They're not. The, the new ceramics are super non-slippery.
But I have something else to throw in here. There's going to be a campaign to have people buy some kind of pavers or bricks or something and that will be stamped or marked with people's names. So I think in someplace we need to think about where is that gonna go so that we know we are gonna have it.
So in this updated design that pulls back from the water line, we have a brick threshold at both the town hall and in front of the library in brick stairs. So the stairs kinda bring you up to this landing pad and then you go in. And then the breakout space, the socialization space happens on the wood deck.
Yeah.
Is the fault.
That's nice.
All right, so, yeah, thank you.
So just, I, I agree with what was said, but I, but two, two things that I, that I think, one is, I think when you're thinking about that area around the deck, which I agree with the comments, I think that you should think about the water suggestion that Steve made. It's within the purview of the library and personally I think that it, that you may have some ideas that would improve the feel if, if there were some.
Or a fountain.
Fountain, yeah.
Oh, some kind of a white noise device.
Yeah. Secondly, we're talking about all the oak understory and you also have laid out that there's a different understory for the redwood area on the end of the library which would include rhododendrons and ferns and, and plant material that is going to be greener because it is a wetter environment.
And it'll be irrigated more.
Yeah, and it'll be irrigated more. So I, I just wanted to make sure that we were all aware of that because I think that helps the whole sort of looking feel.
And I just wanna question the Deodore Cedars, 'cause you're showing green area like in front of the council, old council chambers and in front of this deck, but the Deodore Cedars right out here, they have a huge canopy and I don't see how that, how you're gonna plant underneath or have green unless you have artificial turf under that at all.
There are things that like a jugia that you could plant underneath that that would grow into a ground cover underneath it. We'd probably wanna keep emaltrine about ten feet offset from the actual tree itself.
So I think we should show that when you're kind of doing these illustrations. And also, we have to remember that they blow off so much pollen that it's, right?
Yes.
I do.
It's a, it's a big.
I haven't really noticed it with these two, but I sure noted.
You haven't? Oh, my gosh, this, yes, absolutely. I mean, there is a layer, right? That yellow pollen all over, so we have to, whatever we do, it's everywhere. It's still on the red tile out there, on the hundreds. It's thick, it's yellow. So when you're coming in and out, so maintenance issues are really important here about the deck and because these trees are gonna all load up under that pollen.
Okay, so I think we're ready to close landscaping for tonight?
Can I ask a little part of clarification? So on the material of the deck, the way you would build a deck with like a ceramic paving system or like a suspended hardscape system versus a wood system is a very different kind of construction. So it'd be good to have a general direction.
Well, I, I, it might have been the wrong recommendation.
I like to.
The question is, this town is not gonna have super detailed maintenance like somebody living in the Great Big House in Atherton. And so you, you've gotta be prepared to bring a client here in five years and show them how wonderful it is and how it stood the test of time with civic ma- level maintenance.
So this is the kind of wood that is actually approved for public park usage even because it's, that's one of the reasons why we.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
If all, if all things being equal, I think wood on that deck over ceramic.
Oh, it'd be beautiful.
Absolutely.
It'd be gorgeous.
Or, or artificial.
As long as it's really ready for it, yeah, yeah.
What is, what is the difference in cost? Now that the council's here, I can ask a question.
This one the library's gonna take right.
Ceramic, the ceramic has a, an infrastructure.
Okay, so George, what I was gonna ask you is, the next time landscape comes back, we need ninety minutes to talk about it. It really should be the only item on the agenda other than a very small, it comes back. So if you can, Marty, we need ninety minutes to landscape.
Yeah.
Okay. And then two is, I'm gonna hand the keys over to you Elizabeth, the steering wheels. But I do have that, you're gonna run the meeting.
Oh.
Yeah, you're gonna drive this car. I'm gonna fade to the background. But the thing that I did wanna raise is that at the appropriate point, I do wanna bring up the, the common discussion I have with Ned Speaker, yeah.
Well, you wanna?
'Cause that's a budget thing and it's not, it's more the council than CCAC, but I'm doing my duty to bring it.
I think we should talk about it now. Yeah, do it now.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, great.
So, okay.
I just wanna make sure we're all clear.
Yes.
We're, we're in, we're past fifty percent PD and we're kind of running close to the end, but it sounds like it would be better to have the next meeting tie up the landscape because they really can't go, because it has an effect on water, overall water on the, on the campus as well as impacting and.
Yeah, you're, you're not gonna do irrigation plan yet.
Right.
Yeah.
So we're gonna move to, to this side, we're gonna move the deck, we're gonna move the deck.
Yeah.
Well, we're just not ready.
Are we talking about this December?
But that's not critical path in any way, is it?
Well, we can't, can't live right now.
Can't be a hundred percent.
But it's not, it's not critical path to technically be a hundred percent DD, yeah, but in terms of construction or anything, it's not, it's not normally critical path.
No, do we have to be a hundred percent?
Yeah, for that thing, for the landscape and the, and the.
Pauline thinks you say they can't get to a hundred percent time development without the landscape being finished?
Correct. Yeah, but if we tell them, okay, a hundred percent time development without the landscape, then they can make their deadline.
And civil. So it, it.
It affects a lot of different plate bits.
Yeah, some, is it a?
But you're gonna do your C three, right? You're gonna do that anyway.
Yes, but all of these things, I mean, these are all kind of in concert on C three, right?
But those are finishes.
No, but they're doing different things for, for both the Atherton requirement or stormwater.
Is this the big one that you wanted to talk about, the, the permeable paving?
Permeable paving and water budget would be the two things that, if, based on what you guys said, you guys aren't looking at what I'm showing with the modification to the finding.
That's true.
I could, I could advance these plans to, it might not be to the same level as maybe, but obviously the architecture will be, but it'll be pretty, you can continue to price it on this mission. But if we change those premises, it'll change the infrastructure of the site.
Yeah. So can you? I just wanna make sure that's.
So do you wanna have it on December fifth, the next meeting, on the next CCAC meeting? Have a ninety minutes with the landscaper?
I, yeah, you need us to do it together. And we don't really have anything else to talk about.
Right.
This committee, if the PV's gonna come back.
We need to hammer this down. It's just not, you know.
That's all we got left.
We need some more explanation about the design of the deck and the, you know, steps up to the library, how that's going, where that, you know, because it looks to me like instead of having the ramp up to the front door of the library, you've changed that significantly. And now you've got the ramp going up to the deck and then there's a green wedge there and a green thing over there and I'm, you know.
Yeah, but I'm.
So I think we need to spend a lot more time on this.
Yeah, yeah. If, if this design is part of the landscape design and not architectural design, right?
It is. I mean, yeah, there's a lot that kind of work together. There's systems underneath the deck, so getting, I mean, all of, you're right, so would be good to do it.
And then the little stones out in front, it looks, from what I'm seeing, it seems harsh. It doesn't feel cozy or welcoming.
Well, I think that's right now the only thing we do have on our agenda for December fifth is just landscape.
Any comments from council members about this and the?
Well, I guess I had some questions. I, I looked at a number years ago at the porous paving. And at that time, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, we still had to compact the ground to the point where it wouldn't really absorb. And then there was a, it was a maintenance, a, a, a big maintenance issue that required, then, you know, the, the ROI just wasn't there. So I guess the, is that still the same or has science improved things or what's the situation?
It's gotten a lot better with it in a few ways. For one thing, we can use structural soils underneath that'll help the water actually be shot into the soil instead of just the back there that's there and like suffering. So that helps the infiltration and life rate and also the storage of water underneath. So it holds it a lot longer, which is great.
So can I also add that Sherwood Engineers who's done a lot of these previous paving, previous paving installation has done a couple in the area including some residential and I think they could leave us over there if anyone wanted to see that. We've done about three or four since.
That would be worth it.
Two thousand and, yeah.
That would be worth it.
Seven installed. So they're actually performing much better. There's maintenance to it.
Yeah, you just have to put like oil on it or something like that and so.
No, no, not at all.
But you have to do it, sweep it up, vacuum it.
Is, is the group you just mentioned, Pauline, the ones that did the Sacred Heart parking lot?
Yes, not the perfect example.
It's, it's not perfect.
No. And that, that if you, we can go over how they fixed it, which was really a sub contractor issue and.
Maybe they learned their lessons.
The sub?
Or Sherwood or whoever, because.
It wasn't a design issue, it, it was.
It was the execution of it, the design.
It was an, and the only reason I can say that pretty clearly is because two tests put, uh, um, areas that were constructed as the model for how it should be done are, are done extremely well, but in the rush of construction, it was a very short timeframe.
Well, also, they have cars driving on it.
That's okay though, I mean.
All the time.
Yeah.
This would not have cars.
That's true.
Okay.
So the other benefit I would just like to say about the system that we're proposing is actually a kind of a specified system from a particular contractor, Anakin Sons, that's very high quality. If you go to the GJRA, like if you go to the Golden Gate Overlook now, all the new paving up there is this particular specification blend. The longest they've had this installed in any one place is about ten years and they never need to vacuum it in order to get the same infiltration rate in the ten years of installation, which is pretty awesome.
And where's that installed?
The Golden Gate Overlook.
Wow. On the north side?
Yeah, in front of the GJRA. So you'll see the, there's the visitor's center and you just go down the parking lot around, you can see all the pathways.
Or either, or the south, either side of the bridge.
On the south side of San Francisco.
South side, okay.
It looks like DG, right?
It looks like DG, especially when you get a field with it.
Well, what's about per cost, per square foot?
Right now it means fifteen dollars, seventeen, eighteen dollars per square foot, but it depends on how big the site is. So we're actually have a decent sized site, so we might go.
That's, it's all their material.
So, so just to be, just to be clear, I think that the estimator should actually respond to cost questions, just, just so that we're not getting one piece in this.
Paul's here, Paul.
Ah, no.
Paul, come on up.
Because we can give you our information and then you can remember.
I retract the question. I was in my own house.
No, I think, what is the cost versus the alternative? That was kind of my one other question.
What a, what a perfect handout for me to talk about this.
Yeah, okay.
Paul, okay.
So, Paul, Steve, Steve, Steve has, Steve has some, something to report.
Yeah, great. So we're closing the landscape discussion. We'll see you again in a month. Thank you, Chris. Great. All right, so I, I'm just Ned Speaker, you guys all know and I don't need to explain why Ned reached out to me. Wanted to make sure his feelings got to be, so I'm doing it in this form. He is committed to donating based on the project being efficient and reasonable and he has encouraged his friends or even induced his friends to do the same based on his assurances. So it's very important to him. He's worried that, that two things in particular are more expensive than they need to be, that they're beyond what this project should have. One was, he thinks we should just renovate this chamber and keep this as the council chambers. He'd like to find a way to get the library to pay for that and then we would rent it back when we need it. That's his thought. And then number two is, is, you guys, I don't know if you've seen it, maybe even put it up there, Pauline, the lobby of the main building. I don't know if there's a good lobby shot. We made the lobby fairly large on the, you guys know in the Advent Building to allow public events, like they do up in Hillsborough. Have a place you can bring people together. And he just thinks it's overkill and we shouldn't do it.
Wait a minute, let's, let's just take a look at it, okay. And also, I think, not the only reason that the lobby was made, the size it was made, it was like a, literally like a design element of having the three arches and, you know, to have it have some space presence in the ferrothentrance. So you have to look at it from the ferrothentrance also.
Okay. So I, is it, is it thirty by sixty? He was guessing.
Eighteen hundred square feet, yes.
Is it now? Is it still?
Yeah.
It, it could, it could easily be. I mean, each of those arches could be ten feet. I just, I just don't know.
Well, we have it in our packets.
I think it's eighteen hundred square feet.
Is that about right? Okay. So his point was, it should be twenty by twenty, twenty by twenty, which is four hundred feet, which, you'd have to fundamentally redesign the project to do it or it'd have to be like a.
Smaller than a classroom.
Well, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to think how you'd do it with the width of the building, but.
Well, we'll just say twenty by twenty.
I thought you did.
No, we didn't.
Twenty percent.
I've been enmeshed in this issue for the last month and it's not only Ned, the three, three of the four large donors are very concerned that there's not enough money and they don't, that they, they're looking for ways to make this project get done. And there was a little bit of a study done and it looked just visually done and I think the entrance without changing the arches could be reduced by almost a third by moving the walls in, not changing the roof, but have a bigger arcade on each side but a smaller actually interior entrance space. And that would be six hundred square feet or so.
Particularly on the police side.
We weren't that, you know.
Yeah, just 'cause we're the bathrooms area.
Yeah, picky. But that was one concern. The second concern that, that I was asked and I have not gotten the answer to that is, you may have an inch away. The last time we studied the cost of redoing this building, that I've seen numbers from, this year and a half ago, and we now have a new facility and I haven't seen the numbers on that and I was asked, did I answer that? And let me ask, what's the delta between new council chambers and redoing this? So there was some estimates, kind of rough estimates and.
You got estimates for renovating this facility, but the new council chamber was not extracted as a, a unit cost for all of that, it was all part of the overall building.
What were the estimates for redoing this?
Why, he's like, George, can we, can that memo that I forwarded you from encapsulated conversations, can that go to council and be read and forwarded to the, okay. I appreciate if it, it can be done so that, so I've done my job.
Nine hundred and ninety-two thousand.
I was, Ned estimated a million dollars.
That's for this building?
Yes.
That's the delta or that's the?
No, that's the new building.
That's the renovation of this building.
That's the renovation. And, and any idea what we're spending for the new building?
Just, just to be clear on that, that estimate does not include making it an EOC.
Yeah.
Correct.
Oh, right.
That's more expensive nor does it need any of the technology needed to accommodate the EOC or council chambers.
So maybe to make this fair, it'd be nice if staff could, the request has been made by Mr. Speaker, he'd be, he'd like to know that. And staff, you can decide or the council can direct staff to either come up with an estimate or not.
And you want them to be apples, apples.
Yeah, apples, apples. And that, that includes, includes all kinds of things to make it a council chamber, so.
There was a.
That's what this would have to do.
You know, an estimate from somebody who's in the business saying it might be a million and a half dollar difference in delta. And if people are investing in this project with donation money, it's worth looking into. And we don't have the money, so we may have to make decisions like that and I think now's the time to look at it.
And that also has ripple impacts to the cafe and.
It does.
Historic heritage or.
But I, and, and he did not say this to me, but I'm inferring from his comments, he wants to be able to represent to his friends that this is an efficient and reasonable project and that we're not wasting money, that Atherton isn't going from, he says, what we have now is awful, I forget the word I used, but it was awful. But we're going too far. He wants to feel like we haven't, you know, do we need an eighteen hundred square foot lobby? Are we really gonna use it that much or is it just, you know, we're just doing it to do it? And so that's, those are the two things. But the two places you saw was that and can we reuse this and get the library to pay for it? Yeah.
So not speaking to lobby, but I don't believe that we can redo this as a council chambers and have the library to pay for it.
I'd mention that to Ned, yeah.
We can redo this as a council chambers. We could definitely do that. And I think we should look at whether it's more cost effective to redo this and keep it as a council chambers rather than to build the new council chambers. My understanding is it's about the same, that it's about a million and a dollar, a million and a half dollar cost. But in either case, in which case, you know, I, I'd prefer to build the new one and, and have this be part of the library. The library was designed with a multipurpose room which was taken out of the library because this became available as a multipurpose room to be managed by the library. So it raises some issues, but I suppose if this were the council chambers as it is now, the library could use it in some occasions. It's not, it's not the best situation for the library because they probably, if, if they have a multipurpose room, they're gonna program it for it.
Right.
But, but the one item that I am quite clear about is that I do not believe that the library governing board would agree to pay for this to be redone and used as a council chambers. There's been great sensitivity.
Even if we rented that from them?
Well, we can, I mean, we can propose it, but it presents some issues in terms of,
Scheduling?
You know, scheduling and, 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 you know, why would the library do that? Why would they agree to pay a million and a half dollars to do that? I, I, they're very sensitive to us using our donor funds for non-library purposes. It has been proposed by past councils to use those funds in certain ways that were not supported. They've been very sensitive with me throughout this entire process.
So Ned has no clue of the history?
No, I understand.
And, and we've talked a lot about the issue of donor funds, which he doesn't have much concept of. So as he looked at it from just a numbers standpoint, he said, well, have them do that and we'll share it. But if, if the delta between these two buildings is something reasonable, there's no reason why this building doesn't get looked at to be our council chamber EOC. And we pay for it and we have a scheduling issue that is worked out at the beginning of a year, you know, we don't use this building all the time. Wouldn't it be nice to use it? So then I think we work it out with the library and get it used.
What's the benefit though, Dee Dee? If, if it's about the same cost, let's say that the new one's a million two fifty and the rehab's a million, a million, you know, let's just say it's not a big number. What's the benefit?
It's not a big, big number. The benefit is the way people that are donating might look at it.
I think we should give them the comfort to do that analysis.
Exactly, and that's why I'm asking now, it's time to ask. We haven't done it and we're gonna answer it.
So, so my, my two cents on it. I've got two, two cents here, I've got two cents here. I wanna roll them together and get a nickel or something, okay?
No problem. My two cents is this, I, I think, and I've said a couple times in council meetings, I think that the lobby is a little big and, and I think that we should try and see if we can squeeze some of that down and that would address Ned's concern.
And how much, how much money would we save by doing that?
I, I don't know, I'm not.
Well, I, I think that. Well, I, I think that's the exercise.
That's the question.
That's the question, because we're talking about dollars and cents, not just your perception that it's too big, but the dollars and cents.
Well, I think eighteen hundred square feet is too big.
No, no, I just...
I, I think that really eight hundred square feet shouldn't, shouldn't be taken out personally. Okay, so secondly, with regards to if this becomes the council chambers, we are also designing a new, uh, courtyard. And the courtyard currently, you know, we have that hut there that's the EOC, it's not adequate. But we could design the courtyard to be, to, to accommodate a better...
Build, build more space over there for the...
Get over for an EOC as well.
Build an EOC over there.
Right, so, so I, I don't think that this has to become an EOC. If the decision is, there's a lot of savings if we keep this as the council chambers.
So I guess we have to design that and figure out how much that would cost. How large, eight hundred, a thousand square feet, you know, whatever. Mr....
Oh, thank you.
Well, I'm getting them.
No, I, you gave me two cents, I get twelve the other one.
Exactly.
Um, I agree with Rick. Um, I think the entryway, if we're going to consider, I'd like to know what the cost breakdown would be without severely impacting the courtyard area. So as far as the entryway's concern from the ferro side, not messing with the exterior aesthetics, but moving the, the wall inward to get rid of interior usable space without impacting any other things. Then as much limiting the impact on the inside as much as possible, but whatever square footage. But just wanting to go that cost figure in balance, see if it's reasonable.
All right. Mr. Luntz?
All seems reasonable to me. I, I understand and agree with the way Rick described the situation with the library. I, I want to be sure that we are responsive to, you know, educated, intelligent comments from, from smart people who think about this stuff, as, as speaker is. But I also know, we just got through this process a while ago, trying to trip down the building, and we talked to staff. I don't want to overreact to a comment from, from Ned Speaker unless, you know, let's think about it, is this the right thing to do? And, and if it is, let's have that, let's have that conversation.
Okay, it seems to me that it's dollars and cents, right, is what, is what he's looking at. Reasonable, uh, to excessive, and we have to kind of boil it down to what's cost savings if we reduce the lobby by, you know, pushing forward the entry wall, right? Is that what you're...
Well, if you were going to do it, I think you'd do it on the side of the police station, right here.
The side.
Right there. You'd move it, you'd move it right to here, to where that door is.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
You could move it to this wall, right here, all the way back to there.
Yeah.
It, it'll be dark.
There's an architect's one, this is...
But that would just mess with one wall, right? You still have your lid and your other three walls.
Just, because we're asked this a lot, and in this case, it's based on the design, and this happens on every similar project too. When you're trading interior for exterior, it's not as, it's not like you're subtracting everything, right? So what we're doing is we're reducing interior wall space, but we're gaining exterior wall space when you slide that wall in. So you're taking an inexpensive surface, which is drywall and studs, and you're replacing it with waterproofing exterior. So I'm just saying, you may lose interior condition space, but I'm just letting everybody know it's not going to be like, hey, we just saved, you know, all that, you know. If the building's square foot is seven hundred bucks a foot, we have, and you took thirty feet out of it, you're not saving that delta, because you're adding cost back in, especially when you add more exterior envelope, costs go up a lot.
Interesting, but it's not, it's not a complete exterior envelope.
It's not a single one to one, because I think it's, it's going to be, there may be some savings, but I, I don't want to get everyone's hopes up that, you know, it's, it's like we're cutting chunks out because we're adding more envelope.
But you're going to lose the...
We have exterior walls, we're adding more stuff.
If we take, if we start to create, if we pull that wall in...
So I, I have to ask, because I'm really under pressure from the three major donors. Their money is going to be gone if we don't make an S three million dollars, all right? Their money is going to be gone if we don't really study what we're doing and make a very clear case that, you know, we've looked at this, here's how we can save some money, here's how we can... So that's what I'm going to ask all of them. That is what's driving me right now. Because I'm out here on the road every day talking to these folks and others.
So can I just ask, what do you propose?
Before you, just as a point of order, so the CCAC got this comment, we've handed it to council, so it's yours, it's yours to think about. The CCAC, that's not our job. If you, if you come back and you say, guys, we want you to carve out money or space, then we'll work with these guys to do it, but I'm just, I'm handing over to you a call that I had. So, you know, we can continue to talk about it, or we can move on with the agenda.
The second part was to look at this building versus new council chamber space.
So a couple of process questions. First, you just, at the end of the day, there's math involved, you know? And so what's the plan to get the numbers in the math?
So I guess, you know, the, the question is, and George has his kind of, okay?
We can certainly work, I, I, that's what I heard from the direction of the council this evening. Feedback is to work with the architects to develop what those deltas are for shrinking the lobby space in some way, the most economical way with the most amount of space, as well as looking at using this building as the council chamber slash EOC. It won't work at the courtyard, that building is actually smaller than it currently is in new design, not bigger.
We have to build a new building.
Well, we have sketches based on the available square footage of trucks and truck movements. That is actually a smaller building space, and moving things toward the park, so that creates a bigger challenge. So this building will probably need to be used as our EOC, so it, well, to create an apples to apples comparison, that's what we would look to do with this council chamber versus the old. Also articulating what the ripple effects would be with respect to the heritage rooms, the cafe, and other design issues around this building.
So given all those complexities, what would be the timeline to get the, the numbers in the math to look at it, say, apples to apples?
Adam, Paulie?
So I think, um, we'd like to, we'd have to do a couple iterations, right? And I, before everyone leaves, I'd like to just sort of bracket what is acceptable for change. Because even though it doesn't, it's in the city council's hand, there, there is an architectural impact, which is in the CCAC's hand. So maybe we'll bracket that. Then we have to go and talk to a couple of consultants, because I was just going back, but we did this a couple of times, you remember? About whether the, the police training room could be the EOC, that wasn't really accepted by PD. Maybe we have to go back and check that again. It has an impact on how they function, but still, it's, you've got to do it. So we can go through that. So I think there's some work to go all the way around, pull up what we've talked about before. Um, and then before everyone walks out, make sure we are clear about what is acceptable to the CCAC for changes. Because there's what Adam talked about, there's also some shrinkage. That lobby serves, uh, two or three functions, obviously. Um, I think, but it's all about sort of putting it in which bucket. So can I go there really quickly? Okay. So, um, God, I'm not tall enough. Okay, so here's the lobby. It's about twenty-eight by fifty-eight. Okay, so it's not small, but it's not that big.
Thirty by sixty.
Twenty-eight by fifty-eight-ish, right, and I'm not counting all the area around it. So if we squeezed in a little bit, that three arch architecture that we had talked about quite a lot becomes really difficult.
No, we're going... I think they're going the other way.
We're going the other way.
No, 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 I'm just saying, but, but you're asking us to look at everything, so we're going to look at everything.
Yeah.
So that's one way to do it, which is a little easier and doesn't add exterior, um, uh...
Envelope.
Envelope, the way Adam talked about. So we're going in, unless we're going in here, if you're going in, you're, you're building exterior envelope, right? That's what Adam just talked about. So we have to kind of look in this way and this way. So then the question is to all of you who had this conversation with him, is it about just tightening as much as you can, or is there a magic percentage number? Is it ten percent? Is it five percent? Is it as, you know?
I think it's numbers. It's, he, he perceives that it's excessive and that we are spending too much money on that lobby.
And there, and there was a perception of it's just too nice.
It's just too nice.
Yeah, we don't need something that's nice.
It's, it's too grand.
It's got to be a meaningful number.
But it has to be a meaningful, yeah.
I understand, but there is a, a, there is a point at which it makes great sense and it still is a good space, and then there's a point at which you're just cutting, and then you're, then you should be looking at it.
But, but council has to think about it if they want to. One response from coun, the council's going to look at their numbers, they're going to say between this building, there are two issues, right? The lobby.
Yeah.
If you cut out twenty feet by twen, if you cut out four hundred feet, like the whole area in front of the police entry, how much does it save? It's four hundred feet, maybe it's three hundred bucks a foot. Is it a million bucks? Don't know, okay? But it's, maybe it's, okay, and then A, and then B, do we, how do we feel about this building versus the new chambers? They're going to, they're going to weigh that versus if we're going to lose three million donations versus if we're going to potentially raise for publicly, how do we feel? That's up to the council.
Well, we're not going to lose three million in donations, because a donor can't get back what's already been spent. They can only get back what they haven't given. So, but there's obviously many risks.
Three million pledges or something.
And, and there, I mean, there has to be some significant savings. So we, we need to look at what that would be, and I think that's what they've asked for is, you know, they're, they're not being unreasonable, they're saying if you did this, what would the cost savings be? And they would like us to look at that. I don't, I don't think that's an unreasonable request.
We can trust staff to help Pauline and W Jordan's bracket what that is with these costs, then we can go back and do that. How long do we think that would take? December seventh to come back with some information?
I...
December fifth, CCAC?
Yeah, we need at, at least, I mean, it's a, it's more, we'd stop our, our team and then run into this for at least four weeks of, right, incidentals.
So we're talking about the, the lobby as one option, one, like to reduce it from eighteen hundred, whatever, four hundred square feet.
Or whatever, there's not, there's not an option.
I don't think there's an option.
Right. Right, right, and then the other one is not doing the new council chambers, instead of rehabbing this one, right?
Right.
So that's another exercise to look at.
And the cafe is not an issue, because the cafe's part of the library.
No, but you, you wouldn't have the space here.
Yeah, you wouldn't do it.
You don't need to do it, you wouldn't do it.
Correct.
Well, we could, you know...
Because it would just make...
I mean, we don't have to do the cafe, it's bigger and simpler.
There could still be a cart outside of that place to sit with somebody serving it. I miss, we really do have to get real with numbers.
So I think we're looking at numbers, but, you know, the, the, the reality also is that we're going to go out for public financing. I mean, that's, that's, I think everybody's pretty much agreed on that. And so, you know, how much public financing are we really going to have to go out for to, to build something that is going to be functional and usable?
I think that, I think reducing the lobby overall is going to be a pretty small number. I really think, you know, that is based on that you're, you're shuffling indoor space from outdoor space. You're still talking...
You're just taking square footage of the metal of the floor, the doors, the walls, it's all still there.
We can still do it, it's not, because what it does is it reduces the image of grand. Like, that's really what it does, and, and that's one, but it may not be a lot of money. Obviously, I think...
And the council will have to decide, how do they, do they, how do they feel about the current? Well, the one thing I can speak on, because we're, we're the design group, I think it's a phenomenal project. I think the town should be so proud of what we've, this plan that's come together. It's incredibly tasteful without being opulent, and it's long-term, and it will, will work wonderfully for Atherton. And it's in keeping with what the town is, so it's, it's something to think about.
I don't think any of members of the, um, committee here feels that what we have on paper is overstated, a Taj Mahal, too big, too grand at all. In fact, the, the committee has worked and worked and worked and worked and worked to, you know, squeeze it down, make it efficient, uh, take out any, uh, notion of exec space in the police department, or, you know, any kind of, uh, grand, uh, look and feel of the building to make it more residential, to make it fit in with the neighborhood. So I think that that's, um, that's where we're at. And, uh, you know, the exercise of, it's always seemed in my mind that it's apples to oranges, like to, uh, renovate this building or build a new city hall, it's going to cost the town about the same amount of money. And to have the library renovate this building and use it in their programming is such a much better option, uh, because the library donor funds are there. They're available to do that. And so, but that may not be the case, you know? The, the comparison between the building of the new council chambers as we've squeezed it down and, and, and made it more modest versus renovating this to accommodate all of our technological needs, the EOC needs, you know? That, I think that is the crux of the issue. I think that is the, um, real comparison that we need to have. I agree with Adam. I think literally moving that entrance wall back and making the police lobby be an exterior entrance, literally, just to make the interior lobby less grand is not going to save a lot of money, because you still have the walls on either side and the roof.
You'll have hardscape too.
Yeah, so I, I, I just, I don't think on a sheer numbers rationale, that's not a compelling issue to do that.
But if the numbers aren't throwing that up, then obviously the answer would be that. But I, I do believe with major donors asking a question, we should spend some time to answer the mail and say, hey, we've looked at it, and here are the reasons why or why not.
And that's why we're, uh, we're here, that's why we're talking about it.
And if it's two hundred thousand or three hundred thousand savings, it's not worth it, definitely.
Exactly, okay. So we're, we're done about that?
Just to make sure of the timeline, if you need four weeks to do that, you've got a holiday in between.
You're right, we were just...
Yeah, December seventh, I'm not going to make it.
Right, so now we're talking mid-December to early January.
January.
January, I think, to be next scheduled council date.
So it's, it's going to be up to council to kind of decide, uh, whether, you know, in this fundraising effort, it's a hard, hard stop at the end of the year. You know, we have to look at our timeline for how we then go forward with other, um, actions that we need to take in order to, uh, uh, make sure that we have some other financing alternatives.
No hard design, just sketch.
Right, but everything else will come to a halt, I mean, they can't move forward anything.
Okay, do you concur?
I understand the implications of waiting until mid-January to get these numbers, which is what we just talked about, really.
Design development's going to stop, right.
One, it has to just...
Well, it can go forward on the library, it can go forward on the police wing, you, you, you mean, there's a lot, but it's complicated.
And to do a detailed cost assessment, Mac Five's going to have to do it.
It's kind of a mess, yeah.
Because if heritage goes out and goes in there, then we, we can't...
Yeah, it's a mess. You've got to end the building, you gotta...
So just to, I guess, the point, if we just took really, really simple, with no design input, if we took four hundred dollars times six hundred dollars a square foot, that's two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Four hundred square feet times...
That's two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
That's a quarter of a million, and you said if it's a quarter of a million, is it not worth it, so?
But that doesn't include...
Well, but that's just the lobby, correct?
I mean, yes, correct, right, just that money.
But that doesn't include design, you could, if you have to...
Doesn't include, yes, sure.
Oh, you can solve everything, and who knows, that can be added up real quick.
No, it'll cost a lot to redesign the building.
Right.
Yeah.
Is there a way to summarize that?
You have to do all your energy calc's over there.
Right.
And so Paul, do you have a swag about the council chambers?
New council chambers or renovating that? I mean, because you can take that six hundred dollars a square foot and just lock that council chamber off, and you've saved...
A million and a half.
A million and a half?
I just did it dumb.
So it's a million and a half for the new council chambers versus a, a million to renovate this, but it's not renovating it to...
So they had all of the bells and whistles for the new, new EOC.
But the million and a half includes a lot of, is that included all the podium and everything, all the internal stuff? Or is it just construction cost?
No, he says, you're, you're mixing it up. The million and a half is for the new council chambers.
Yeah, yeah.
The million to renovate this is what is estimated for the library's used, used.
No, no, I, I don't get it.
And so then you have to add in the DSC and, and the EOC and stuff, and that could...
The, yeah, yeah.
But doesn't include the EOC, yeah.
Yeah, and that could come up another couple hundred, three hundred and a half million.
It's probably two or three hundred grand at, at the most, the delta.
So I'm looking at it's the same...
We've assumed it's a wash for four, five years, yeah.
We have, from, from the very beginning.
Where to illustrate it so we can see that?
We want to give the...
You've got to be able to give the donor...
Ned's a very important guy to us, and we want to do the math, and, and that's what, that's what we're, we're passing along that request.
And it seems like...
We don't need to wait till mid-January to do that.
Yeah, we should not have to wait till mid-January. Yeah, we should not have to wait till mid-January.
No, it should be, there should be a, a, a-
Should that be that, or?
Exactly.
I don't think you need drawings, I think you, yeah.
No, I, I, I think it's just more of a, a, a reality number, versus we've been talking about numbers that are old. So, if we could get updated figures to figure out if this is even reasonable, as simplifying as much as possible just to give us more emphasis on how we make our decision, so, one way or another, and actually also help our donor. But we do need to come up with some drawings, because these guys have got a woman.
No, they're saying-
No, but I don't think we need drawings.
So, just drawings apply.
I, I don't think we need drawings. Just to get the square footage and, and what the implications are, and then the S.
But you want what you draw, the building, this is it, you've got a building. They're gonna, and you've got numbers to renovate this building, then you have to upgrade the EOC, and you have to upgrade to put in all the PV and dais and stuff that are in the chambers.
We've already pushed it some back.
You have those numbers, you just plug it, you take them from that building, you put them in this building.
Sure.
Yeah, it's a math exercise.
I think, I think the key to do is to give you guys as short a time as possible, because otherwise you're gonna go into all kinds of design that we don't want you to do.
It'll cost a lot of money.
I think, you know, if we give you like two days or three days, it's like, you're in love.
Right, way to go, Clyde, run with your feet to the fire, come on, I agree.
What could you do, my friend?
Tomorrow at three o'clock.
It's that kind of an exercise.
But wait, it's not just putting, it's not just-
Before Veterans Day, huh?
Excuse me, it's not just keeping the architect's feet to the fire. I don't think that the donors want us to spend a lot of time figuring this out, because it, time is money. We, Paul did that analysis for us early on about how much it costs every month we delay. So, I think what we want is to look at what it would cost to renovate this room, and you have a bunch of information on that, but some of it you have to look at, because making it EOC compliant and making it the new council chambers adds some cost. I just, that is gonna take some looking at, and-
So, just to be clear, it's not the architects, it's the estimator.
Yeah, it's-
Okay, that's fine, so, I, I, yeah, I just think that-
Okay.
But, but I, if I could just make one quick comment, I mean, when we were here for the donors' breakfast, you brought it up then. He went into George's, and we gave him an answer then. He went into George's office with DeeDee, asked a question again, and now we sent you a letter or a phone call, and asked a question again. So, obviously, the answers we're giving him aren't satisfactory, so I think we need to do more than just do a, we've just figured out it's not worth doing. I think it needs to be a little bit more complete, because this is the third time the question has been asked.
So, to echo that-
This is the first time everybody's been hearing it, you know, collectively, however, in a public, open meeting.
Well, yeah, sorry, but to, to echo that, it's, it's a choice of whether you wanna design-driven data analysis or just a Marty and Nick five, snap, get together and say, okay, these are the numbers, let's put them together in a spreadsheet.
And you come back with a memo.
Yeah, I, I don't think it has to be design-driven, George.
Good, yeah, I, I agree.
There's no-
It's a two or three page memo that comes back.
All right.
And here's our methodology, we took the blah, 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 blah.
Okay, so, if that's a level, then we can do it by the December seventh, I would think, right? Because otherwise, if we're talking about designing, which we're not, we couldn't do it by the certain-
And just Pauline, continue with DeeDee's full speed, that's the other question.
Well, I think just based on the swag, we kinda know where it's gonna come out, we shouldn't stop the architect for that.
That would be my instinct as well.
Anybody have a comment about that?
I think it makes sense, I, I really, I'm not, I'm not trying to, to, to be crazy, but I do think this is a week-long exercise, right? I think even a month is too long, and if it's taken a month, I just think there's too much work taking place. And see what the methodology looks like, and if you guys believe it's thorough enough, I, I think you can move it forward to Mr. Speaker. But this is just like it's grinding something down to a, to a, to a halt, and I think it's something that's fair question, but it can be answered pretty-
But I'm sure you didn't intend it to grind it out to a halt.
But there's, there's a lot of experts around this room, there's a lot of work that's been done here, so I think it'd be a good idea.
And Ned said to me, I just heard this from a friend, I don't know if it's true. I said, Ned, we brought in Phil Warrens when we were at the Town Center Task Force, he did the initial analysis, told us it was a wash. Said I hadn't heard that, or I didn't know, or I don't know if it's true, and I said, do you, do you want us to have staff look at it again? He goes, yes, so, then, we'll ask staff to look at it again. I mean, I'll ask you guys to authorize staff to look at it again, but, yeah. Okay, and then the, should the project management subcommittee try to meet with you guys next Monday? Should we try to do the one week, and then Monday we'll sit down and have a conversation or a phone call?
I'm guessing it would answer it, answering phone.
I'm probably next Monday, so that's not a worry, but somewhere next week, I'm sure we can figure it out.
Okay.
I think that would help to focus this strategy for, because we're not gonna, they're not gonna, we're not gonna draw, they're not gonna estimate.
Make sure we're not sending it down long term, yeah. Oh, or we could meet with you sooner, if you need a strategy, right, then we wouldn't wait.
Thursday, I'll do it.
Tomorrow, you know, for something quick, yeah.
Wednesday, Thursday?
My challenge is getting the estimators all in one room.
Okay, so, we'll, we'll, we're, we'll take that offline, the, the-
I think Friday's-
Rose, five and I will try to figure out a time to meet.
I'll coordinate all that.
Friday's not all right yet.
Okay, so, we're done on that, so, what we have been for is a sustainability discussion. And the sustainability committee met prior to this meeting. Rose, do you wanna kinda give a little summary of that for council? Everyone has the, the spreadsheets and the grid.
How do you summarize that meeting?
And you're the summary, how do you sum it up?
And if we need to have another meeting with council, I, I think that council will be very happy to have another joint meeting to discuss this as it becomes more fleshed out and more, um, first.
Well, I can say without a doubt that this is still ongoing, our committee and what we're doing, the works. I, I'd like to say a few words, and then maybe Pauline can jump in and talk about the PB. I mean, I think that was sort of on the agenda, and then we can segue into the sustainability. What we've been trying to do is itemize all, all those, all those features in the building that are not part of Cal Green. We've itemized the Cal Green as a mandate by, by the state, things that we have to put into the building. And I believe Paul has already included those items into the latest cost estimate. But what we're trying to do is look at all the other net zero features and itemize that, those items, assigning a cost and prioritizing them, and also identifying the ROI. We've gone around it a few times because of, you know, several reasons, just trying to simplify this, different thoughts and all of that. And we just met again with the latest information from the consultants about an hour before this meeting. So, we really haven't had time to finalize what we'd like to present to council, we, we do need a little bit more time to do that. But I think that today what we can do is go over the PB layout, which was on the original schedule, and walk through what we, our committee, subcommittee is doing in order to provide the council with the information to decide what features the building could possibly have based on cost, ROI, priority, and all of that.
Can I just add something to that?
Yes.
So, just to be clear, because it is a work progress, there, yes, on this list-
I don't, do the rest of us have that? I don't think that we do.
You do have the one page.
What's that?
That was given out today.
George, George handed it out.
George has handed it out there.
Yeah, we just got twenty more.
You're not good at honestly?
I got one, I got one.
Yeah, here.
I'm good.
Just to clarify, it, it became, this is a list that was translated to the estimating team based on the sustainability matrix that you guys saw a long time ago, or a while ago, that one that we just looked at. And I just wanna make sure that when you look at this, there's a couple edits. So, there are four items which should be just crossed out based on what Rose said. So, that's items four, five, eleven, and twelve, and then Y. So, four and five are LED lights, and in our review, in the estimators review, it becomes a wash with fluorescent because LED lights are cost-effective these days. So, it really doesn't live on this list as an item for review.
There's no premium.
There's no premium, so, we have agreed, well, that's, that items four and five should be crossed out and not discussed. Eleven should-
Pauline, before, before you go, that, that means that they are part of the base bid column?
In the, they are, yeah, at least they're, they're listed as in the base bid column, so that's correct.
Part base, so anything else?
Should explain.
We're just saying that there's no discussion because it's actually-
Zero sum.
Zero, it's, it's a, oh, wash, insufficient these days, blah, blah, and I know, I know a lot of you all know that, so, that's true.
Right.
Zero value.
And the ROI is very, I mean-
Well, I thought that also it's, it indicated that they were Cal Green, if I'm working it, if they're one or two or not.
It helped, yes, it helped us get there in October, like, that is.
Right, so, if they're Cal Green, they're in, there was never a question.
They're, they're in, so, right, so, four and five out. Item eleven, in that sort of same thinking, is the mechanical system that helps us achieve the requirements of the library in terms of acoustics, and it's also worse because as we had said before at the city council, this is an elevated level, right? Because you have to walk down, the library is gonna be at that same level, so it's elevated. We're gonna bring in the system under the floor, and so we're not doing anything extremely special. It's a very efficient system, for that reason, it's helping us meet Cal Green. And so, that item is just, is not an item for, we think, for this kind of discussion. It is in the base bid, so we would take that out. Twelve is taken out because it's a leftover, again, from design thoughts before. It's, there is no displacement of ventilation, so just not to confuse the conversation, those four items are really not, I think, for us to go over, since this is really about sustainability items that are outside of the base approach.
The, um, on its original-
Sort of makes sense, I did have a couple of questions, um, I, I get, I get the concept, I think I get the concept, it makes sense. But the, um, could you just define for me, I guess, what base means then? Because, because I look at included in base, there's numbers here. In some cases, there's numbers included in base that aren't included at all as a premium cost. Could you just define when we say base, what, what does base mean in that premium, as in, as in, it's not base, or it's a base?
Sure, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go forward and let Marty and, and Paul weigh in. So, base takes into account a couple of things. Mostly, it is the dollars associated with that project, right? So, what can that project bear? And we know that the library has funds already allocated to it, and so that's included. I mean, that's sort of, that helps color how we look at it. It also is what's included for the functioning, the code compliance, and anything we think helps to speak to the ambition of that particular building. So, you can, that's why the library has more in it than it does, okay?
So, if you look at eleven- I know, if you look at eleven-
Yeah.
What, what is two hundred and forty one thousand dollars?
It's for the whole, it's for the system, to, to, uh, well-
That's the construction cost estimate for that component?
Yeah, it's a, is the, um-
And what we've heard from council last month was, you've listed all of these, some of her are in the base and some of them are part. You wanted to have an identification of all of those costs whether they're in the base or not, and that's why it was listed here initially.
So-
And ju- just, just to add to that, the, the numbers that you see that are in the base, now that you've taken out four, five, eleven, and twelve, they're all library. There's nothing for the admin and police building that are in the base.
Number four is placed on it.
That's out.
Well, the only thing in the, in the civic center are the, the admin, police, is the LED.
But that's just been, that's taken off, it was the same cost as before.
Right, which was taken out, so there's, there's actually nothing left as a civic center project, as a base.
And the library ones were based on a meetings with the committee, so.
So, and, and just to make-
Right, so, this, this shows you what, what were additional costs above Cal Green for the library. They were included in the base based on committee judgment, because the ROI for those things was reasonable. There are some things for the library that are over in the premium cost category, because the ROI for them was much higher.
Right, so, and the central plant, please correct me if I'm wrong, the central plant for the campus for both buildings and Heritage is burdened to the library, correct?
Correct, right.
Okay, so, that means the mech, you know, the, well, you know, the mechanical system which feeds everything.
Which Chris was talking about before, because of the, the playground.
So, that big piece is in the library's cost, even though there, there's an advantage, an advantage to the, you know?
So, if I could ask a question, so, I've got no issue with your displacement, you said that there's less than a year payback and at least the chart that you sent us. The under, the underfloor ventilation's got a five or more year replacement, it's not Cal Green prior. But it says in the right, it replaces ceiling ventilation, so, is this reflective of the savings of putting the ceiling in there? If you had to put the ceiling in, it wouldn't be the same price?
You'd add, no, we'd add, you'd add money to it, so then, yeah.
Right, so if you take this underfloor air out and you put a mechanical, sort of a package unit approach, we'd have, you'd add more money in, so I don't, you know?
About the same price, though, would be at the same price if it was up, up in the ceiling versus under the floor.
It'd be structural, right?
It's structural on the roof.
Yeah, there'd be, that's the same.
So, that should show no dumping cost, because we'd have to have some sort of ventilation system.
Anyway, so we would, yeah, so we should cross it out.
So, what you're saying is you moved it underground so that it's, it's quieter, but the price is for sale. You know, it's having ROI, even though it shows one year.
All right, you know, but, but we're not talking about it anymore because we struck it, and so, we shouldn't discuss, I know.
Oh, I think that they're, I'm trying to ask, we were agreeing it's struck.
No, I mean, when we got it, it's in, yeah.
Elizabeth, can I ask you a question? What's our, what's our goal for this meeting?
So, so, I think that what Rose and, and the sustainability committee should talk about, you know, is what Rose said in the beginning. We're running past our, our time.
Okay.
I think we're gonna need another joint meeting with our council, once the sustainability committee has tightened up all of this and flushed it out, and it seems to me that you haven't. You haven't, so, I don't think this is ready for-
I don't think it's supposed to go till seven thirty.
Well, what, what's the goal, though? What, what was the outcome we were hoping for?
Is this to at least have, stay on savings?
It's not, okay, I can answer that, I can answer that.
It's six thirty, yeah.
We've been trying to get a document that's comprehensive, that includes key data to hand over to council that they can evaluate which systems that they prefer or would, would like to integrate into the building, but right now, we don't have that document.
I don't think that I wanna just have this kind of general discussion without having something that, uh-
I would, I would think so, I would think at least, I can get out back to this. You should get some verification or their validation that the ones that are on the lighting should stay on the lighting. I'm no one who understands the cost.
What, I'll leave Max on that.
Is this included in base?
The same answer that goes over.
It's your answer?
Yeah, the question about this cost.
Those are for the library.
We got this an hour ago.
Sorry, George, so you're saying if, if everyone confirmed that four, five, eleven, and twelve are struck?
Right.
Then that's, that's a significant amount of this table.
That's very helpful to the design team.
Right.
Okay.
I think DeeDee has something to say.
I just have a question.
Okay, yes.
It has to do with this ventilation system in the library. Woodside School, or the Woodside School Hall, or the new building that you guys built over there?
The gymnasium?
Yes, the gym, the vent, there's a problem with the ventilation system, it's not sufficient.
I think, want me to speak to that?
Yeah, I wanna know, because I don't want us to do the same thing, because they're now gonna have to go back and fix it.
No, so, the ventilation, it, so, there's two things to that.
Uh-huh.
There, uh, now, now I'll tell you from my perspective and what I, I just, so, there's an, there's an air system and no cooling. Although the air system, it's an air handling unit, have a slot in it where you can, you can put in cooling coils for cooling. The analysis shows that, because I just did, I actually did the weather profiles over the last five years. The weather profiles show that it should work for most days. There was an operetta that happened in July, I can't remember the exact date, where the, the temperature at seven was at ninety-one, ninety-three degrees. That's, that's an anomaly, but during that anomaly, which is a real thing-
They didn't design for it, you're saying?
No, no, it, it, during that anomaly, the system can't, it can only, it can go up to eighty-five, eighty-six, not ninety-three.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, and that was an underst, that was a understood condition. So, now what we're talking about is, well, if we wanna just make sure we have it, if those anomalies continue to arrive, happen, what we're gonna do is insert cooling coils and a chiller, because the pathways and everything are there in order to give them that flexibility. So, I just wanna make sure it's clear, it's not that the ventilation doesn't work, the ventilation works fine. The cooling capacity wasn't inserted because it saves a lot of money not to put in a chiller and a, and a set of coils. It's money that, you know, we, they didn't have to spend, so now, they're considering spending it, does that help? Okay, so, in, in all of that, we would, we would do, what we're going to do is make sure you have to have ventilation per code. So, that is, it's just a requirement, so that is the baseline for all the buildings, whether it's through natural ventilation, underfloor air, whatever. So that is the baseline for all the buildings, whether it's through natural ventilation, underfloor air, whatever it is, right? So that's gonna happen. The cooling and heating side is being delivered by different kinds of systems, whether it's in the ceiling or in the floor, or however it is. So we're trying to match up what makes sense for each, for each program. So in the council chambers, should it continue to exist, it's gonna have a very simple air handling unit because though it's not the most efficient system, you're not using it as much as you're using your offices, your library. So we've tried to balance use profile with best equipment, kind of efficiency and cost. So it's item by item, right? So I just wanna make sure that ventilation, all on, all good. How you're delivering it is gonna be different by project, how you're heating and cooling is gonna be different by project, I'm sorry, by delivery.
Okay.
But, so then, on, on these analyses, and if, if we're not gonna go over all of it either, we have a, a follow-on meeting, where you have to do something.
Yes, like the council chambers.
Right, then, then you should see, you know, you should, you should put that in the answer, that said that, hey, it's gonna cost you a quarter of a million dollars if it's over the ceiling, this is quieter, here are the benefits. So it's, you're gonna spend the same amount of money, but this is better, we think this is better. That actually then helps make the decision to whether they become no brainers, but when, the way it was written here was, it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars more.
Yeah, and, and to be clear, the matrix had, um, and, and we qualified it, is, is our assessment of what, what we saw right now, since we got an estimate this week, it needs to move into the estimator's world to help do exactly that, to help do those to do that. So that you can do what we were just doing with lighting, but much more specifically, yeah.
Elizabeth, can I ask a process question of you and maybe George? Um, I, it wasn't really clear to me why we're having a joint meeting, why this didn't go through the normal, our normal process, which would have been, the green subcommittee would have come to a CCAC meeting, they would have reported, we would have listened to them, and then we would have written a staff memo that would have been passed to council. Is it, does the council wanna take this over or something?
No, no, I think council.
Because this feels like an awkward meeting to me.
Well, I think the only reason it's a little awkward is because we're not completely ready to present. I think that's the thing. But at the last council meeting, council members felt that they did not, uh, have enough information to be able to, um, adequately approve or not approve some of the design elements that were being presented. And they didn't have the, um, the, the cost analysis of, you know, what is an add-on and what the ROI, the benefit of adding some of these, uh, sustainable features into the project were. So, um, it, and it just seemed, let's have this meeting. I think it's good to have the full council involved in kind of understanding what's going on and how we're approaching these issues. And it was good for us to have this.
We just weren't ready, that's all I'm saying.
Well, I realized that because I wasn't, uh, I didn't go, so, that, there was some, that was.
Okay.
So if you're at a estimate, because of, of the Brown Act and sort of the way the law works, the opportunity for those of us who are not on the, we just don't, we learn very little about what's going on until suddenly you're sitting in a council meeting and bam, it's happening.
Okay.
So I think, just speaking for myself, as we get closer to, to the end line here, it, it's gonna be helpful probably for the council to be able to get together to have conversations. And to do that, it's gotta be a regular notice meeting, and that's sort of, I think it's, let's, let's do it with the people who are working on it, that's sort of the way it came about, I think.
Okay, so it might be the kind of thing, we, we, we continue to run it like a CCAC meeting, but you guys are here. I mean, we, we continue with our project.
I don't think it's.
It's definitely notice, yeah, no, I get it, you're officially meeting. But I mean, it's, it's not like, uh, I mean, we just have a committee structure, I think, like, as, as a chair of the other committee, I'm trying to figure my role. Like, what is my role in this meeting? What am I supposed to do?
He's insecure.
Yeah, 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 I'm totally insecure, I don't know what to do.
And the chair of the Sustainability Committee is, you know, kind of taking your thunder too, because she knows more about this.
Oh, do we rename it? It's not green anymore?
Oh, well, it's green.
Or it's green, yeah, okay, okay.
But, um, so I like to kind of assess the council's feeling about how much detail you wanna get in to on the sustainable matrix right now.
We're getting to the end though.
Considering the fact that the Green Committee, um, really is not, doesn't feel that, uh, a lot of this has been flushed out enough.
That's not gonna be simple, I know.
I, I don't feel it's been flushed out, I'm not ready to pass it over to council, which is how I felt in last month's meeting. I, I think that, you know, by the questions that are being asked, um, still, I, I would like to have all that, you know, on paper so that we hand it to them, you know, and it's pretty evident what the thing, what the thinking is. I think by, um, you know, their questions and, uh, uh, we could do better, come on.
I, yeah, it feels very, like it kinda came together last minute, there's no staff memo here, there's no recommendation, there's no, did you want A or B? It's just, yeah, I'm not sure we're supposed to do that.
So, could I, since we did get copies of some of the documentation, um, and you're gonna go back and do some analysis, but similar to this question. Can I look at this picture here with all these solar arrays? And I, and I walk around and I see these thirty-five foot trees over here, and I really wonder how effective they're gonna be. So if we're gonna come back and look at this sometime in the future, with all these arrays, uh, I guess my question would be, have you done the, the proper analysis to make sure that they're gonna be a hundred percent effective? Or are we just throwing money, good money at the bad on some of these things?
So, good question, we actually have done that, they, uh, the electrical engineer who was connected to PV walked, got on top of the roof and did actual solar measurements. And so, um, the left side or the south side of the library, the skinny side here, is, is less, um, effective. And so that's why most of the PVs are up at the front, and that's why the library's a little wider there and helps accept that along with, um, the program requirements. So, good question, it has been looked at, there are areas where it's much more efficient than others. And so we started with those areas first.
Yeah, I, I was thinking more of the ones that, they go past, where you stop is where the tall trees are, as I went out and looked. But, the, the ones across the street, it looked like they may be, yeah, impacted, and, and that was just my question, because they're just, they were everywhere.
Yeah.
And then also, you said, police parking, I assume that parking, that's not police parking.
No, it's, it's like a canopy.
So I have a question.
Put an efficacy for the, which will section?
Yeah, we could ask them to, to give us that.
Yeah, that would be helpful, yeah.
Um, but, I think, yes, most of them are very locational.
I have a question about the, um, the carport, uh, uh, numbers. And if we, um, you know, especially, uh, item number six A, um, the one point eight nine eight, you know, for all the carport structures. Um, does that include the structure itself as well as the PV?
Yeah.
It does, so it's the entire unit, it's not just the PV.
Part of the reason that those particular areas are more expensive is because of the structure.
Right, so if we wanted to like stub it in, in order to, you know, we see that at some point, have to build the structure, and that's probably most of the cost in the PV.
I would say most.
Not most, but part of the cap or something, okay.
Steve, can we have a denied discussion as well about the PV?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
My concern is, um, in the, um, preliminary plan, it shows we're now putting, noticing to put PV panels on a clay tile roof.
Hmm.
Um, in fact, over almost all of the, um, the, except where it faces onto ferrous.
Yeah.
So, does that mean we should be rethinking whether we even need clay tile roof? Like, you're not gonna see it, what's the point?
Right, so, and, and maybe just to be clear, um, I don't think you have to have it. This is just an assessment of how you get to a net zero for the whole campus. And so if it doesn't go on the clay tile roof, it can go on another canopy. We kinda did a master plan of where PVs could go. This is actually a reaction to comment we heard that we forgot it, um, when we actually had made a decision, I think with you all, to not put it on because of the quality of the clay tile roof.
The only place that this, that the CCAC was willing to allow it was, uh.
At the, at the train station.
Right there, on that roof. And, and we wouldn't have put the clay tile, and we would have not had it there and had it flat.
This picture has it. Your, your picture has it completely solid.
I picked it up over there, I don't know if I have it.
That's not what I have, that's not what I have.
Where'd you get that?
Are, did you?
I'm special sourced.
So the upper left-hand corner.
Maybe it's the one that came out of the.
Look here, what, see? I don't know.
I'm special.
The entire roof.
No, no, it might have been, uh, the one that.
No, the orig, the original one that was sent down.
It's wrapped.
That's right.
It did.
No, no, yeah, no.
Phil's got it too, see, he's, he's special too.
So the original one is the master plan of everything.
I think you got it from Martin, actually.
Anyway, anyway.
And it's just to show you where else it could go, right? In fact, you would never put all of those up.
No, yeah, so.
Okay, well, so that's the kind of information we need, like in a memo or an analysis.
The answer is if we start putting. You gave it where we're gonna.
This, this is, um, this is not our recommendation.
It's your option.
I wanna know what's a recommendation is, the most efficient.
We're not anywhere near there.
The one with the, well.
At least the CCAC is not anywhere giving you a recommendation of this.
Yeah, the, the WRNS key recommendation is the one that has the blue line and the rose line around it.
Okay.
That, that's, now, that being said, it doesn't respond to Clay's point about.
Do you mean the ones that look like PV panels?
I think that's a really bad idea, the tiles.
Okay.
Yeah, so you could take it out, I could, and you could say, we don't have to achieve net zero.
Net zero, that's what's safe.
Well, I think that's what raises.
Or we, we think the tile, the tile roof or something.
And it may, it may raise another issue for, um, our Green Committee, which is, for instance, the geo exchange, um, although it's expensive, it may actually reduce the need for PV, because it's an alternative form of energy.
Okay.
Um, and so by the time that, that Rosa's committee has really had time to really study all of this, we might find that we don't need to put PV on the clay tile roof.
But you know what would be really handy though while the council was here? Is, like, we, the feedback on, is this budget driven? Like, you wanna know that the payback is within some number of years, five or eight or three or whatever? Or is this, we really wanna be zero net energy?
No, I think we, we said in the past that, on the sustainability things, we're gonna meet Cal Green and everything else is based on an ROI basis.
ROI.
Now, but I, to, to the point about the clay tile, I mean, we've already agreed, we love the look and feel of the building that you've designed and the, and the clay tile roof is part of that, so putting solar panels on top of it doesn't make any sense.
And, and on ROI, what, if, if we meet again before you guys, I don't think, but if we did, what, what, what's the break? Where do you guys, is it, how many years?
Pretty, four or five, maybe.
Pretty short.
We haven't had that discussion.
Okay, but it's not twelve or fifteen.
No, it would be twenty or fifteen.
Okay, it's a single digit number.
The question was if this, um, if it's possible or if it's not required, let's talk about it.
But, but you know what, Bill, Bill, ROI, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, on some of these investments, it's not a two to three year payback on these sustainable.
Well, there's a five-year payback on one item.
On one, but it's typically longer.
Well, I think, well, I was just saying that that, the council isn't presenting its best business.
No, we have that, so we can't, we can't say.
It'd be helpful, because there's not a, we wanna be zero net energy.
That's another, they have all these, but it really doesn't have an ROI, but it's a backup system, redundant system like we, oh, you talked about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, the P A C.
You know, having a well inside for eighty thousand dollars.
And some of them may be super cheap, may have a long payback with the chief there. Two thousand dollars.
Really doesn't have an ROI.
Oh, that's, that's pretty cool.
That is, that is fourteen year.
Okay, fourteen year.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna, yeah, so, yeah.
Sorry, sorry, just because there were two great conversations going on, and I just want, just because of what we've learned in the past, we wanna meld them together.
Good idea.
So, so ROI, get it, we were, we're looking at it. In addition to ROI, I believe we are bringing to you all, um, other values for consideration. So we talked about resiliency, with the, one of the, um, city council meetings I was at, there was a lot of talk about water and resiliency. So whether that is in a well, that makes sense.
Resilience means in a disaster or something?
Yeah, or, and, so, so a well, which we, we actually talked to, to you about too, or in microgrids. Now, is there funding for that, that can come from another source, potentially, the P A C is a potential source. So, it's, I just wanna make sure that I'm here looking across and that there's an understanding that we're gonna try to vet that along with educational benefits so that you can decide, I'm not, I'm not putting a judgment on it, that you can decide whether you wanna put that investment here for that reason.
Well, we first wanna go through the Green Belt.
Yeah, yeah, but just.
But having that data would be good, if, if we could get FEMA funding to put in a well that we will be using in the event of an emergency, that might make some sense or improve the decision, but we, so the other attributes would be helpful.
So.
But the, the thing you're gonna wanna think about is, how do we plum the building so that if in the future they decide to do that, they can?
The, uh, the P A C grant process, we're in phase one of that right now, which is doing feasibility analysis. Phase two is where the money is, the actual grant application, and that could fund the solar and the microgrid component.
And the second part, what are you gonna say? Um, so this is, I know that this is really important to make sure everyone is in alignment with the decisions. I think some of these items are, um, important for us to finish through design development. So if we're gonna sort of table for good reason the decisions on these items, so that you can, that, that group can feel comfortable and give a recommendation to the council, we would, we would pull back from running towards DD. It doesn't, it doesn't make sense, because right now, Civil needs to know if a well's in, if gray water's in or not, um.
Well, we don't have a recommendation.
We don't have the data.
We don't, there's not anything for us to approve, so I don't know what else we can do for you.
We're just starting today.
No, no, I, I don't. I don't, I know.
Yeah.
No, I'm not, I'm not trying to be the bad guy, I'm just putting it out, it's so that everyone hears the, and, and, and there's an expectation that that's what, what we're doing. So I'm not trying.
I think what you're saying, Pauline, is that in order to complete design development, we have to make decisions on all of these.
Correct.
Would be smart to.
Right, and I, I don't think anybody would disagree with that, but it's pretty clear, we're not gonna finish design development in the timeframe we have planned.
But we, yeah, but I just wanna put it up again, so that it's clear that everyone, when we come back, you understand.
I, uh, yes.
I think that's really your role to.
Can I just go back, I wanna make sure that, that you don't feel limited, because there's discussion about ROI.
Sure.
I, I mean, I'd like to get the best advice everybody around, if there's some reason that's not obvious, that's not ROI related, I'd like to hear if we're deciding on a way to spend a hundred thousand dollars or twenty thousand dollars or something.
Great.
So please don't be limited, you know, please, if I were sitting in the council, that's what I'd like to know.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're actually gonna update this sheet here, uh, to include another columns for that, for ROI's and purpose and things like that, and strike out the four that we talked about, so we'll be able to work with Rose and her committee on all that.
What would be helpful to know is what, what, yeah, that's, is what, Marty and Rose, because you guys are a team, what, what position, what stopped you guys from being ready to do that today? Because I thought that was the goal. And, and what do you need to be in a position to do that on December seventh?
There was just so much going on with the cost estimators, I mean, we were working till Friday late to get this information, and I wanted to get it to the mayor of the council and the CCAC as soon as possible. And it was just, there's just, there's a lot to do. I mean, Paul, you, your people are crunching numbers feverishly.
And I'm trying to come up with something that you could understand and, uh, somewhat warm it.
So when can you, so, Rose, the question is, when's your committee gonna meet with staff?
We haven't decided when, you know, that's a good question, I think that we do need to meet before the next CCAC meeting. This is certainly, as I've said.
Probably within the next couple of weeks, I would think, and again, that's making sure the committee gets all the information they need to digest it, go over it with them.
And the realistic nature is, it's probably next week.
Yeah, next week, before Thanksgiving, because next week's it.
Well, yeah.
Probably next week.
Thanksgiving.
I've gone to two countries during holidays.
So maybe we've been.
But I think that, that, that subcommittee, whether, I don't know, Marty's gonna write it, but you, I think that needs to come to this December seventh meeting with a memo that's making, it's clearly articulating and making a recommendation.
But, what's the December seventh?
Yeah.
Because your, the CCAC's meeting December fifth.
Whatever day are we meeting?
Right, and then the council's on December seventh.
Which, whatever.
So, I don't know if you wanna have another joint meeting on the fifth, Mayor, or whatever, I mean, that's certainly, uh, optional.
We won't, we won't do landscape then if we do that.
Right.
On the fifth.
Not have time for both, yeah.
Poor guy gets pushed off until twenty seventeen.
Yeah, we need a.
See, you can do landscape in the CCAC and then follow up with a joint meeting, like we did today.
I think people need, I think we need to really be really focused. Let's see how, if you guys have a really clear memo, and it's been pretty clear through staff and George. and it's been pretty clear through staff and George, and recommendations are clear, then that's one thing, it can be half an hour, forty-five minutes, but if you're not ready to be like this again, we, we won't have time.
The question to, not Friday, that I think we, there are still some, um, sort of squeezing through the estimate that needs to be worked on, and, um, because our, our engineers just looked at it and, um, from what was given on Friday, and then you guys need to look at that and then send it back, so that's a good week back and forth, true or not true?
Well, I mean, it took a lot of effort last week to flush out all the, the issues from the matrix, which has a lot of information that's evolved over the last few months, to getting numbers and making sure that everyone understood where those numbers came from, so getting your team to vet those and make sure that the semantics was correct.
Right, I think that there's still some people things, you know, so there's some base estimate things to work through, so that's probably a week's worth of work, and then that would mean the following week.
Following week is, uh, Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving, yeah.
Right, so I'm just, yeah, I know you have to go back to your team and see where they can, uh, have a separate meeting and, uh, check in with us, so maybe it's the week after Wednesday, is that what you're saying?
Too late.
Yeah.
You won't, you won't have a, you won't be ready to present, you won't have it.
Thanksgiving, when they choose a Wednesday.
Yeah, we can't get things at a meeting that we've never seen before, it's crazy.
I'm, I'm with you.
There's a next week.
So it's, it's.
After Thanksgiving.
I was thinking the weekend of the fourteenth, because.
They have to have.
We use this week to that again. I'm going to China, then I'm going to Madrid.
Okay, so then the weekend.
Do you wanna, should we, should we designate somebody else to, to run that, Clive?
Oh, Clive.
He's on the, are you on the green committee?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna be gone.
Can you act as chair for this next one?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so I'll coordinate with you.
Rose, you're on.
I can't, talk to, I'll get into the meeting.
I'm going to two different countries.
I can't talk to you about the meeting.
When is that, so?
Okay, so they're just agreeing.
When, when is that?
Uh, from right before Thanksgiving until through the first.
Because if we're gonna meet next week, will you be here?
Uh, I'll be here next week, I'll be here next week.
Okay, I'm there.
Yes.
So we'll do this offline.
Steve, so I have a clear memo from the subcommittee, you wanna have a joint council meeting, you'll be following your Monday, Monday meeting.
Right, right.
Okay, so you're not. We're, we're gonna continue planning something, planning if I'm not here, then.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, 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 yes, yeah, thank you.
Okay, and that would be December eighth, yeah, December fifth. December fifth.
You won't have enough time to put it on the agenda later.
You won't have enough time between the December fifth and December seventh to post it properly for the Brown.
Yeah, but I think that.
Well, they could get the data done before, they're gonna have to have it posted for a public meeting as well before the.
But I, but we need, we need to discuss it, and we need to kind of prove it, but we can do that.
We have to prove it to go.
In my chain.
Yeah, we won't do that until forty-eight or spring meeting, or twenty-four, whatever it is.
No, no, like this, uh-uh, no, with that, the recommendations.
It's always an issue, every time we push somebody, guys, we have to wait.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so that's what we're gonna do, thank you all, I'm, I'm, this is it, um, meetings are.